Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to Spokane City Council briefing session. Ms. Fister, will you call the roll?
Council President Wilkerson.
Present.
Councilmember Zepone.
Here.
Councilmember Bingle.
Here.
Councilmember Dillon.
Here.
Councilmember Klitsky.
Present.
Councilmember Navarrete.
Here.
Councilmember Cathcart.
Present.
Let the record reflect that all council members are present.
Great. We'll turn it over to Mr. Scott.
Thank you, Council President. Councilmembers, I believe first, we're going to have a slight departure from the agenda and hear from Marlene Feist about an award.
Good afternoon, City Council. We're just excited to share our Governor's Smart Award for the Cochrane Basin Improvement Project. So we stood out in the rain, which was kind of perfect because it's all about stormwater management, and we're able to accept that award from the Department of Commerce today. So just to remind you all, thank you for your help and support. It's $25 million worth of work to manage the stormwater from the Cochrane Basin, which is 5,000 acres in North Spokane. And as part of that project, while we were dealing with stormwater, we also helped upgrade the irrigation system at Down River Golf Course, built a few tee boxes, rebuilt TJ Minock Road from Northwest Boulevard to the bridge, and made some pretty significant improvements to the whitewater disc or the whitewater boat launch area and also to the disc golf course, creating great public amenities while we cleaned up the water for the river. So I think Jacoby has a video that Kirsten gave him.
Good morning, Mayor Brown, members of the City Council, and staff from the City of Spokane. Today, it is my pleasure to present the Governor's Smart Project Award to the City of Spokane for the Cochrane Basin. This was an example, this is an outstanding example of a project that achieves multiple benefits with a single project. When times are tough and when money's tight, it's critical that you don't do anything for just one reason. This is such a good example of a project that helps the city meet its economic development goals, its housing goals, its environmental and sustainability goals, as well as providing outstanding recreational opportunities for the city. The judges of the award were particularly impressed with the public engagement activity associated with this project. Over 5,000 residents, 26 public engagement events. This is a great example of reaching out to the community and truly making sure that everyone with a stake in the project has a meaningful opportunity to be heard. So for these reasons, it is my pleasure to present this award to the City of Spokane. Congratulations.
And before we give applause, let's acknowledge Marlene and her whole department. Where will that award be housed at? I'm just messing with you.
We have a little display area on the second floor if you all are interested because we've done some good things over the years.
All right. Thank you so much, Marlene.
And next, one other departure from the regular agenda. If we could next consider the Plan Commission appointment for Tyler Tamouch.
Come on down, Tyler. Welcome.
How's it going, Council?
Hey, tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in this position.
So Tyler Tamouch, current student at Eastern Washington University, majoring in communications, minoring in political science, originally from Los Angeles, California. So came from a place that decided to build up and out all at once, I think. It was very, it's a very big area, but my interest right now is I understand we're a growing city and I'd just like to learn a bit more about how all that works. So I have no background in any of it, but I think I bring a pretty good perspective from just the every person perspective. So that's kind of what I'm hoping to bring to the commission.
Any questions for Tyler? Councilmember Bingle.
First off, go District One and yeah, go Dodgers, I guess.
Yeah, yeah.
You're welcome. So question for you.
Yeah.
Where do you stand on height limits?
Well, building up, not out is, I agree with that because we, I guess, reducing the footprint, we want it, we're growing. So not building out, I think, would be a good thing. That's just my opinion because, I mean, we don't want to go out into the natural lands. I'm a big fan of the farmland. I think that's good, and we don't want to impede on that as much as we can with all the growth that we got coming in.
Councilmember Cathcart, then Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, not a question. Just thank you very much for stepping up and pursuing this. And, you know, I think we've been without a voice from Northeast Spokane for the last several months, year, give or take. And so really appreciate that the administration has put your name forward. And I agree as Councilmember Bingle, go District One.
Appreciate it. And I'll just add to that, too. Like, I know District One is where I come from. That's the voice, but this is an entire city deal. So I will be making sure I bring that well-rounded perspective for the entire city as well. So.
Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah, and just don't sell yourself short. You're involved in a lot of different things in the city, and we just thank you for all your work, especially around Community Assembly, Public Safety, working with you in the Neighborhood Work Group as well. I guess now, in addition with, you know, Planning Commission, and I'm grateful that you're stepping up for this, too, how, how do you find the time as well as being an Eastern student and making this all kind of work in civic life in Spokane?
I'll be very honest with you. It's an advantage being a veteran who has served the Armed Forces. So you get paid to go to school. You get paid, you know, basically a living stipend. So that's kind of where I find a lot of my time, you know? I'm not, I'm not really having to work right now. I can focus on my studies and then just starting in the neighborhood councils like I did, and then with the Community Assembly and just starting there with the civic duty and then just finding other opportunities to kind of keep that going. So and this, this spot was vacant. Apply for the Transportation Commission, that's okay. I told the mayor, I'm just going to keep applying to different commissions until something, something sticks. So this was, hopefully this one's a good one. Yeah, appreciate it.
Tyler, first of all, thank you for your military service. Thank you for serving the City of Spokane and stepping up. I promised them I was going to mess with them, but I'm not going to mess with you today. We're just glad that you put your name in. Nothing else will be required of you. We'll be voting next week and be ready to continue to work.
I appreciate it. Thank you so much. Thank you.
All right. So with that, turning to the current agenda, I believe that the one emergency ordinance was deferred. So moving on to resolutions and final reading ordinances, Ordinance C.36575, we have two proposed amendments, the first being from Councilmember Dillon.
Yeah. So this amendment is pretty simple. There, it was just missing, I think, from the original ordinance definition around relocation. So simply making sure that that was included. That came from some outside stakeholders. When we looked at sort of the list of what was, what would be able to be in the scope of the ordinance, this was what aligned with our municipal code and wanted to make sure that that was created.
Is there, Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. Can we just adopt both at the same time, both amendments?
Sure.
I'll make a motion to adopt both the Dillon and the Cathcart amendments.
Could we have Councilmember Cathcart speak to his amendment?
Happy to speak to it, but I'll second, so we can have that conversation.
So it's been moved in second. But are you going to speak to it, your amendment?
Happy to. So all this does, and this was actually a great idea from my legislative assistant Shay, to give this legislation a title and to name it after Mary's Place, which is kind of what inspired the legislation. And so all this does is it changes the title of the ordinance to acknowledge that it's the Mary's Place, what's the?
Mary's Place Preservation for Spokane, I believe.
Preservation Law. That's what it was. Yeah, Mary's Place Preservation Law, I believe, is how it was worded. So that's, that's essentially what the amendment does.
Any other counsel commentary?
I'm just grateful for the work on this and the collaboration, and thank you.
Yeah, I agree. It's been moved in second to adopt the Dillon proposed amendment and the Cathcart amendment. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes? Councilmember Navarrete?
She said aye.
She said aye.
Aye. Abstentions? That passes. Thank you all.
And moving now to Ordinance C.36600 with a proposed amendment from Councilmember Zepone.
I move to adopt the Zepone Amendment.
Is there a second? Want to speak to it?
Yep. I'll just explain this amendment. Changes it from three council members would be on the Transportation Commission to all council members would be liaisons to the Transportation Commission. And I figured this would be a great way to start the Transportation Commission off. If anyone had an interest in being there, they could be there and participate. And I'd say we're liaisons, so we shouldn't be arguing each other at these meetings. That's for up here later.
All right. Councilmember Bingle?
I reserve my right to argue anywhere. I'm just going to say that.
Any other commentary? It's been moved in second to adopt the Zepone Amendment. All those in favor please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any noes? Abstentions? That passes. The rest is first reading. I do want to announce that we have a number of hearings this evening. Those will be taken at the beginning of our legislative body if anyone had planned on testifying to the hearings and also for staff notification of that. Okay. I think we're on to the advance.
Moving to advance, and did you want to do this one?
Yes.
So one more slight departure. We'll just call up Rob Schultz from the airport first here for item number two.
Good afternoon, Council. Here to brief the 2025 budget. Rob's going to run through some slides for you. We're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Do you have any extra money? That's my first question.
Madam, Council President.
Do you have any extra money?
The budget's planned to have a little bit, but I think we've got some, some things to do with it.
Okay, all right.
So not for you, is what you're saying? Yeah.
Welcome, Rob.
Thank you, Council President Wilkerson and members of City Council. Appreciate your time today. I'm going to go through the airport's 2025 budget. If there are any questions as I'm going through this, please let me know. Happy to answer those as I'm going through the detail. I'm going to keep this relatively brief. You have a big agenda for this. So if there, again, any questions, please let me know. So one of the first things I always start off with is that we are not requesting any funds from the city for the 2025 budget. Please don't tune me out. There's a lot of good stuff that we have here. And so just want to talk a little bit about the airport itself. So one of the, kind of the pillars of airports is to be financially self-sufficient, meaning no taxes go to airports. That's something that we strive for and we continue to strive for on this, and that's what we are forecasting for the 2025 budget. On here, I won't go through this in detail. These are just some of the key operating revenues. You see the top part of that for this in terms of what's really generated from airport operations at the airport. And then you have the capital projects revenue as well. And I'll go through those a little bit greater detail. So just, this is just sort of a summary slide in terms of what those sources are. Quite a few sources on the capital side, and we'll go through that a little bit later on a couple of the slides here. And there are restrictions in terms of what those capital sources can be used for. So they can't be used for some operating costs. If we do get grants, they're typically just going to be for capital projects itself. And I will go back just a second. So what I want to do, there's a lot of information on here, a lot of numbers on here. I want to concentrate on just really a couple of different areas for it. Two sections of this, traffic on the left-hand side reflects our inplanements. That's a really key data point for us in terms of our passenger activity. On the right side is landed weight in terms of aircraft that are coming in that are serving GEG. On the left-hand side, a couple numbers to note. First of all, for 2024, we are estimating a 3% increase over previous 2023 levels. 2023 was our record year. We are trending above that right now. So through the month of September, we are 3.3% above 2023 levels. So slight conservative in terms of our approach for the rest of the year. Hopefully, we're above the 3% that we have forecasted here. But we are anticipating 2024 to be a record year for us in terms of passenger activity. For 2025, we are forecasting a 2.4% increase. That was developed by taking into account input from the airlines, sorry, wrong button, input from the airlines, looking at economic forecast factors in there, looking at trying to be conservative approach as well for that to make sure we hit that number. So 2.4% increase, that's going to take our inplane passengers just below 2.2 million. And given our airport, that means total passenger activity around 4.4. So essentially roughly double that for the total passengers, inplanements and deplanements. So again, that would be a record year if we are able to achieve that next year. In terms of landed weight, lower right-hand side is the number we're looking at, is a 2% increase in landed weight. And again, that's the air carriers, not just passenger activity, but also cargo carrier. So UPS, FedEx, Amazon calling. That's that landed weight. It's really a key factor for us in terms of not just revenue drivers, but also reflects operations, the type of aircraft that are coming in and the demand that we're seeing at Spokane Airport. Lot of information here on this one. Sort of shows our inflows and outflows. I'll just hit on a couple of really main points here. On the left-hand side where it says non-operating, we have a couple of sources that are restricted funds that can only be used for specific purposes. So the, one on the far left is customer facility charge. That can only be used for rental car facilities to support those, that infrastructure. The middle one is passenger facility charge. That can only be stuff used for really terminal improvements that meet certain criteria, and that has to go through the FAA for approval of, for use of that. And then grants, I mentioned that previously in a previous slide, is when we do get grants, they're for very specific purposes or projects that we have at the airport. Can't be used for any needs, and again, it has to go to a capital project. Those are all restricted funds, very, used very specifically for those picker items or efforts that the airport makes. On the right-hand side, it's really just our in-and-outs. So what we get in terms of generating revenue is in the green, outflows in terms is in the red. What that boils out to be is one additional red that we have this year that we haven't had in the past is debt service. And I'll get to that in a little bit later, but we are closing on our bonds that we issued in 2024 with the county. We will close those on Thursday. But that is for really key projects, and we'll talk about those here in just a couple of slides. But so that additional debt service is included in the 2025 budget that we will be doing for that. And then we talk about some usable cash toward the end there. We do cash fund a lot of different projects at the airport itself. And so that is a key funding source for us to be able to cash fund those. So any excess funds really goes to help our, our capital program. In terms of the highlights for the 2025 budget, we are looking at about a 10% increase in operating revenues over 2024. That's going to be about $63 million in terms of our operating revenue. We anticipate some increases in our terminal concessions as well as our parking program, as well as airline revenue. And that's going to be a byproduct of some of the expenses that we have at the airport, as well as some of the leased space that we have. So with the expansion of the Concorde C Terminal, that does allow for additional leased space for air carriers to lease from us. For operating expenses, we are looking at a 29% increase over 2024. That sounds like a really, really large number. However, I do want to note that half of that number relates to debt service that I mentioned, that we did not have in the '24 operating budget. So again, 14% of that 29 relates to the debt service that we need to make for our capital program or support the capital program. Other than that, we are seeing an increase in budgeted staffing levels over current levels, an increase in snow and de-icing removal cost. So we are looking at a La Niña year this year, and that's going to mean a little bit more snow or removal cost as well as the de-icing materials. And then related to the terminal expansion, given the expansion of the Concorde C, that drives additional operating expenses for us in terms of utilities, sewer, custodial expenses, those types of things. And so again, that's going to be factored in that '25 budget that we have. In terms of our capital program, we are looking at a total capital program of about $149 million overall for that. You can see the different ones. I won't go through that a lot, but what you'll see up there is a handful of items related to Concorde C tracks. That is finishing out that east side portion and adding additional three gates there, as well as renovating the existing seats C four, five, and six on there. So it's a really key piece in terms of our capital program for '25. In terms of debt issue, once I mentioned that before, we are closing on our bonds on Thursday. About $67 million of that will go to help fund projects in 2025. The rest of that will be used in '26, as well as a little bit in this year, 2024. And that will go toward Concorde C, the administration building, as well as a fuel facility expansion project that we have. And I did mention earlier about cash funding things. We are looking at cash funding about $26 million. So that excess that we saw on that previous slide really goes to support that capital program that we have at the airport. And with that, this is the final slide, and we're looking at a total consolidated budget of $215.7 million. You can see where the breakdown is on the operating capital. Operating is about $67 million overall. Please note that does include SIA, the Airport Business Park, as well as Phelps Field for that. The capital on the lower right-hand side, $148.8 million for total, again, all three entities. And that rolls up to the $215.7 million that we are requesting for the 2025 budget. Went through a lot of information pretty quickly, but if there's any questions, I'm happy to answer those at this time. Okay, I covered everything.
You covered everything.
Very good. All right.
I have questions. I'll wait till the board meeting.
Very good. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much. And again, thank you for all the good work that's going on at the airport. It's been nationally recognized along with this leader, Mr. Larry Crowder. Kudos to you. And that new Concorde C, if you have not departed from there yet, I would, if you're going to travel, I would advise you to do so. So we look forward to the next expansions. And again, did you tell us what the bond rate is that was approved?
So in terms of our ratings from the rating agencies, we got an A2 and an A rating from Moody's and S&amp;P respectively. And then our overall rates for the bonds, around 4.4% for the non-AMT, alternative minimum tax, and 4.7% or approximately thereof for the AMT stuff. So again, very competitive on there. And so we're very pleased with this bond issuance.
Great. Thank you. Great work. All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. So moving backwards now to item one, which will be briefed by Jessica Stratton.
All right. Good afternoon. So this item sets two budget hearings, one two weeks from now on 11/18, one on 11/25. This is where public comment can be heard on the mayor's proposed budget. When coupled with tonight's mandatory revenue hearing, these three hearings satisfy the RCW's hearing requirements. All right. Oh, yeah.
Just curious, is there any reason to not basically start the hearings next Monday and just open that up for folks who might want to opine?
No, that's up to you guys.
Okay.
Yep. It's just the last, so the final hearing must occur no later than December 7th.
Okay.
All right.
Thanks, Jessica. And thank you, the whole finance team, for your incredible work all year, but especially the last few weeks. Okay. With that, we'll go to item three, which will be briefed by Laz Martinez.
Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. This item is to acquire additional gear and software for the Skell House. We, we have kiosks that we use to charge for the incoming fees on the ways-to-energy facility. There is going to be a kiosk installed on the commercial area, the commercial lane, and some enhancements to the other two lanes we have on the residential entries. $36,000 or so. We have the quotes. We are ready to proceed if you, if we have your approval. Any questions? Have a wonderful afternoon.
Thank you.
All right. Next, item four, briefed by Ariel Anderson.
Good afternoon, Council. Thank you. This is in regards to an amendment with the current Housing Navigation Center contract with Empire Health Foundation. Two specific items. One, increasing the, the current amount by about $1.8 million. This would go towards identifying scattered site shelters within the City of Spokane. And then the other portion of it is around $124,000 to identify folks that are either an active OUD, so opioid use disorder, or at risk of, of that disorder. And that would, that would include Revive doing specific outreach to those communities. Those funds, that 124, coming from the emergency declaration that was done by mayor a couple of months ago. Any questions?
Councilmember Bingle?
Yeah, I had asked if Jason would be here so we could ask questions.
Yes, and he is.
Oh, perfect. Thank you, Jason.
Yes.
So.
Good afternoon, Council.
Hey, how you doing? Hey, I have, I have questions for you on being able to add that extra $1.876 million on top of a separate RFP. Is that, can you walk me through that process and how that, how that works?
Sure. So Ariel and Dawn reached out to me as well as Legal. And first thing we looked at was the funding source, which is the ARPA Ordinance, Ordinance C.36520 that was passed. And we looked at the scope of work that's in there. As Ariel and Dawn noted earlier today, the phrasing in item seven is "and/or for contractual service for implementation of a new shelter model outside of the downtown plan area." So that was our first, first step in the process. The second step we looked at was the scope of work that was going to be filled by this $1.8 million. And it was, in my estimation, as well as the request from Dawn and Ariel, similar to the scope of work that we already have with Empire Health and Revive with this navigation model. Because that is ultimately, the goal of that is servicing these scatter site models. So the scope of services are in alignment. So then our next step was to look at the contract management rules, which say that anything that's over 10% or $100,000 the greater of, that we have to present that to then counsel for review and approval.
Okay, I have, I guess I still have many more questions. We'll probably need to do a separate call or something.
Yeah, absolutely. Glad to spend more time, but it is, it's not uncommon for us to make a similar type of contractual modification, understanding that there's some uniqueness of this particular one, but there's not a statute that dictates that we would have to do a new competitive RFP for this separate funding.
Okay, and what was the ordinance you referenced?
That's the ARPA Ordinance C 36520.
Okay. I'm worried that might be, anyway, we'll chat.
Yeah, just feel free to reach out, council member. I'm happy to chat about it a little bit more offline, whatever's convenient for you.
Thank you.
And just one other on this. So earlier, we had talked about that the source was the 1.8 that was allocated, that had been recently allocated in the most recent tranche. And I'm wondering, there's also, just reading some stuff here, it makes it sound like perhaps there is also a connection to the ARPA allocation from 2022. Is that accurate?
So that 1.8 initially had come from that ARPA allocation, yes, which is also mentioned in the proposed amended contract.
Okay, so that's the origination.
That's correct, yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All right, thank you.
All right, item number five will be briefed by Tim Ott.
I'm here to go over the money for community-minded enterprises or community-minded television through the PEG funding. We went over this in the Finance Committee, seeing if there's any more questions about that, that are asking for reimbursement of $69,544.98. This would be Comcast money that goes to them. They haven't purchased all of this yet, so just looking for approval.
Go ahead, Councilmember Catcard.
Yeah, just to be clear, it's Comcast money, but the PEG fees could be used for some variety of things to a certain extent.
The money can only be used for capital goods that support making content for public-access television.
Right.
Yeah.
So Tim, has the amount of money been about the same amount, or have you seen an increase or decrease?
We only offer them a limit of $70,000. Both KSPS and CMTV find a way to try to use most of that when we offer it. In the past, it's been more, but based off of our current contract with Comcast, that's how much money we offer them for reimbursement for that purpose.
Thank you.
Do you have any questions?
Thank you.
All right, items six, seven, eight, and nine will be briefed by Michelle Murray.
Good afternoon, Council, thank you. Number six has three memo randoms of agreement. First one is for the Criminal Justice Department regarding municipal criminal justice services for $550,000. Information Technology Department regarding language access for $259,533, and then Communications Department and Community Housing and Human Services for the Working Families Tax Credit Marketing for $250,000. These are MOUs, member understandings between administration and the departments, so that the funds are effectively encumbered per the Department of Treasury for the ARPA dollars, and most of this work is being done internal. Any questions on those?
Good.
Great. Item number seven is a public works agreement with the Career Path Employment Training to Provide Clean and Safe Program in the specified downtown areas utilizing ARPA funding. This was some ARPA funding that was allocated, and we broke it up into two pieces. $253,000 went to the Downtown Spokane Partnership, and then $250,000 was awarded to Career Path Services, or Career Path Training. Questions? No?
Keep going. Oh, Councilmember Bingo.
Yeah, so if this were to pass next week, at what point do we expect to see people out there cleaning up our gateways?
The contract will become effective immediately upon signing and goes until the end of next year, or end of '26. I don't have a specific answer for you, but I can get Luis Garcia to put 10 to that.
City Administrator, would you possibly know the answer to that?
I believe it's within the next month or so, but I would need to check with Luis as well.
As quickly as possible would be great.
Sure.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, I sent Jason roughing away, saying, oh, they're not going to ask anything.
No, he's still about there.
Jason, do you know? There we go.
Well, legally, they can't start till after the contract is signed, so we have to prove it, so that's at least a week out, for sure.
Oh, yeah. He was just going to sit there and let us speculate. Oh, gosh.
Well, I also don't have a specific date, but they're already in the area working on other projects with other partners, so it would be a quick implementation on our side.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you, yeah, all of you for your hard work on that.
Item number eight is ARPA funding award to the Washington State, Washington Trust for Neighborhood Business Districts Support. It was a $2,441,150 award that was awarded through an RFP. You had asked for some information about the organization, and I emailed that out on Friday. Did you get that? Okay. Number nine is an award to Raze Development for Expansion and Provide Childcare During Non-Traditional Hours Through, that will go through September 30th of 2026. It's $500,000 last year, dollars to support out of normal business hours to expand.
And Michelle, while you're here, can we jump to your two resolutions as well? 2024, 0106, and 0107.
Absolutely, I would love to. Resolution 20240106 is approving multicultural grants, multicultural centers grants. We awarded two grants of $200,000 apiece for navigation services, and they're going to couple and work with Inovia, with the other navigators that they contracted with.
Sorry, quick question on this. So in Public Safety, today we heard about one multicultural center not being able to meet some of the obligations and part of, I think it was $100,000 being clawed back from this bucket of money. Do you know which one that was?
So we originally, a couple, I don't remember which ordinance it was under, but we, you, city council collectively allocated $1 million for multicultural centers. $100,000 was pulled back originally before we did our, when we did our first reallocation, and it made it $900,000. We gave out nine awards of $100,000. One, I think it was APIC. They, after our last council meeting, when I said ARPA was done, we got an email saying that they are turning down the award.
Oh, okay.
So they reached out to us and said they couldn't accept the award. So that's that $100,000.
Gotcha.
Do we know, is there a technical reason or otherwise? Do we have a sense of the reason?
I believe it was because it was designated for a capital campaign, and then they just came down to where they said they couldn't spend it.
Gotcha. All right.
Thank you.
Resolution 20240107 is approving the youth sports awards. We had a ton of, like, 20 applications for all that, so it was very, very competitive. And then we awarded four, five, excuse me, $550,000 awards. And so this is just approving that if these go forward, that means that they're approved, and then we can go through the process without having to bring each individual contract. And that was for the same time of saving of time.
Small suggestion we can adjust, but Councilmember Navarette, if she wants to be a sponsor of that one, since that was one of the things she fought for, I think would make sense.
We'll make that adjustment. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Michelle.
All right, thank you.
And Caleb.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us back to item number 10, which will be briefed by Dan Buller.
Good afternoon. Item 10 is proposed low-big contract with Big Sky of Hayden, Idaho for the Freya Garland-Towelsley Project, which involves replacement of a 98-year-old 30-inch diameter water main, a full street rebuild, construction of a 10-foot-wide path where the project fronts on Esmeralde Gulf Course, and a sidewalk for the remainder of the project length. This project is partially paid in a state loan, by a state loan, and partially with a federal grant. The bid was $2.83 million plus tax, to which we propose to set aside as 10% administrative reserve. A total of 10 bids were received, which is an amazing amount of interest. The low bid was about $1.3 million, or 40% below the engineer's estimate. When we get bids that much below, we checked to see if it's a crazy outlier, but we had three bids within $50,000 or 2% of each other, so it was not a crazy outlier, just a lot of interest and a lot of competition. Work is expected to begin in the spring and be completed in the summer of 2025.
That's like four months, if you start in the spring and complete it in the summer of 2025.
Hopefully.
In the four-ish, five-ish months, I mean, we'll close the whole road down, because it's, that makes things go faster.
Thank you.
Quick question, not the specific item, but I was just wondering if you could give us an update about the pilot projects for adaptive design for this year? I know it's late in the year. Are those going to be planned for next year, the construction of the three pilot projects?
If they're not already in place, they'll be by the end of this week.
Oh, okay, great update.
I'll email you and give you an update tomorrow.
All right, thanks, Dan.
Council President.
Yes.
I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of amending consent to item number one.
Okay. So move the second to suspend the rules?
And what I hope to do, if there's agreement to suspend the rules, is just to amend this, to include, to amend both this as well as the briefing paper to start the hearings on November 11th. I just think the sooner we can start to get a trickle of input on the budget, the better it is.
Councilmember Dillon, Councilmember Klitschke.
Yeah, I'll support this. I think if you look at the calendar ahead, if we're not allowed to have hearings, it was passed December 7th, we really are on a kind of a time crunch, and we want to hear more from the public. I mean, we have one, two, three, three meetings in the December 2nd, so I think it's of public interest to open up another hearing.
Councilmember Klitschke.
Does that just mean we put it on the agenda and accept public testimony?
Okay, so the, Councilmember.
Yeah, I'm just wondering if we pass it that day, does that mean we're also needing to add it to the agenda as a hearing that day? So.
If we do this right now, then we'd be adding it as an item, as a hearing item for next Monday.
Oh, so removing it to a vote for tonight, then?
Yeah.
And changing it.
Yeah, so there's a motion on the floor to, right.
We would be approving this in today's consent agenda to set the hearing for next week.
Right.
So we need to do two motions.
Yep, two motions. You're correct. So purposes of amending and adjusting the consent item number one, so.
As I understand it, you want to move consent number one to today's or tonight's agenda?
Today's consent, along with an edit to it.
Tonight's consent agenda, okay.
Correct.
Okay, I saw Mr. Chris, Mr. Wright, can I say he was okay to do that?
So the motion, I believe, is to suspend the rules, then we can make a motion to do all of that.
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so there's a motion that's been moved in second to suspend the rules. All those in favor of suspending the rules, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Then the motion now is to...
So I will make a motion, and if I can do both in one motion, I move that we amend consent item number one to include a hearing date for November 11th, and move consent item number one to today's, the current consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Hang on just a second.
Okay.
Sorry. Are you adding a third hearing or sliding them up?
Adding a third.
Got it.
A third hearing. All right.
Ms. Fister, is that clear enough for you?
It's all about cherry. Okay.
So set hearings 11/11, 11/18, and 11/25.
Correct.
All right, that was the motion in second. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? That is added to tonight's agenda.
All right, so we have one SBO, which will be briefed by Melissa Morrison. And that will instead be Adam McDaniel.
Okay.
This is just the SBO for the hot team that was briefed at Public Safety this afternoon.
Which one are we talking about?
Adam, you can stay, because next we're going to your resolution.
That was the opioid.
Are we good?
Yeah, what, on the agenda, though, which?
It was.
That was the one SBO?
For 124, 350. Okay.
Good. Next, we'll go to resolution 20240108.
And this is the Stop Smuggling Illicit Synthetic Drugs on U.S. Transportation Networks Act of 2024, resolution that we briefed last week at finance. Any questions on that one?
All right, next, Mike Ormsby to brief resolution 2024-0109.
Perhaps was premature last week, Council, for saying that that was my last visit and opportunity to sell you in a council meeting. I was wrong.
You'll never leave, Mike.
I'm here today to present the resolution that will be voted on, hopefully by the Council at next week's meeting, to confirm, excuse me, Alice and Adam as the new Human Resources Director for the City of Spokane. Be happy to answer any questions.
I don't have a question, but I already said all the nice things I had to say about you last week, so that's it.
I don't want to get spoiled. Thank you. Thank you, Council.
Thank you.
Okay, the next two items, Ordinance C 36600 and C 36601, will be briefed by Abigail Martin.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. These are two ordinance, the first regarding the Transportation Commission and three edits therein. One is the nomenclature around the Community Assembly's representation. The second one is a code cleanup regarding the Citizens Streets Advisory Council, so repealing that, which wasn't included originally. And then the third one is regarding amendments that the DSP asked us to include, so we included all of those. So that's the first one. Questions? Okay. The second one is regarding the Automatic Traffic Camera Safety Fund, and changing what has been referred to as the Traffic Calming Fund to the Spokane Safe Streets for All Fund, and then providing parameters around permissible uses of that fund. So in the past, I think there's been sort of an assumption around what does traffic calming mean, and this goes to put specifics around that, and so when departments are wanting to use and access that fund, there's metrics to measure against. Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to Ordinance C 36602, which will be briefed by Raylene Jeanette.
Good afternoon, Council President and Council members. This is the final reading on our amendments to the SMC 13.03 on the grease traps throughout the city. It will also align with the county, they're also doing the same wording amendments. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
And finally, thanks for waiting around. Ordinance C 36604, Jason Ruffing.
Good afternoon, Council President, Council members. This is a codex amendment regarding sidewalks. This is a code fix to what's become an operational and administrative problem regarding minor repairs and adjacent owners' inability to obtain permits or to conduct those repairs themselves. Heard the comments last week about some of that permit scoping. We do have a meeting this week to work through some of that with multiple departments, so we'll get some updates to you on some of that.
Will we be able to have those things squared away in a week, or do we need a couple-week deferral on this to make sure we have enough time to work through those?
We'll have some sort of scoping of what we would consider minor repairs and a breakdown of which ones of those things would require permits, which may not.
Okay.
Great, thank you. All right.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, that concludes our advanced agenda. I'll entertain a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second to approve the advanced agenda. All those in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any noes, abstentions? Great, we are adjourned until 6:00 PM.